We have, we have a lot on the agenda tonight, so I'm gonna reserve the citizens' comments to the city council meeting which follows the workshop. So we'll have comments at that time. Council, let me kind of give you an idea, we've got a lot on the agenda. I'm gonna close this session at around 6:20 to give us a chance for a few minutes before the regular session starts, so everybody kind of keep it quick and okay? So with that in mind, we are opening this meeting up. It's five o'clock, and the first thing on the agenda is gonna be a public safety. And I think, Matt, where are you? There you are. You ready?
Uh... This is my grandpa's talk. I can't hear you.
Thank y'all for being here. I'm sorry it's rushing here, but... Yes, sir.
Did you say 6:20? Did you mean 5:00?
No, I said, I meant 6:20.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, so do you have your microphones on? Everybody have them on?
Yes.
Thanks, sir.
Ooh, yeah.
This being a workshop, we will not be voting on anything in the workshop, so just for the citizens to know that, so everything that would be voted on would be in a regular council meeting.
So, in fairness, my printer stapled them in some of the wrong corners, so everybody outside of Dorothy has got special staples, so...
I'm special.
So, tonight I'm here to talk about traffics, traffic issues. This is to address the email Dorothy that you sent to your Ryan and somehow got lost in translation with our recommendations.
So you're trying to ask all of council to input on traffic? I don't know if I'm just the only one that did, but yeah, so that was solicited by our city manager.
So, off of your list, the first addressing that we're gonna address is the intersection of Sherwood and Driftwood. So the, the request that was on your recommendation was to add an all-way signs to the current four-way stop there. So, right now, we do not recommend any changes to this location. Since 2015, there have been no crashes at that location. However, if you did want to add the all-way stops underneath them, it may improve safety, but at this moment, we have no indication that they are needed. Makes sense?
Yeah.
Cool.
The only thing that I'm sensitive about is, I'm in that intersection multiple times a day. It's also a bus stop.
Yep.
And some people, most people stop. I mean, I think they, you know, follow the stop sign, but then they're looking up going, "Well, who do I let go next? Do they stop?" They get confused as to, um, do the cross-street stop or not? So that was my concern.
Okay.
And the bus stop, so sometimes visibility is an issue with the bus stop.
Um, so on, the next one was the addressing of Lake Forest and Stirrup. So, we do not recommend any changes to this location either. Again, since 2015, this, this location has had one crash since 2015. Should any more crashes occur at the location, we would suggest to start with the addition of cross-traffic-do-not-stop signs underneath the stop signs, which would be the yellow signs that are pictured right behind us there and in your paperwork there. That would be our only suggestion to start with after that, because again, the crash data doesn't show that anything needs to be changed at that location.
So that's the criteria of traffic is, are there crashes there?
Yes, so we based everything off of...
That's not the only thing going on at that intersection.
Right, so we base everything off of crash data, so does TechDOT, because again, if, while things may not be going on that way, traffic is flowing enough that crashes aren't occurring, and tra, and crashes are the safety factor that is related to that. So that's the data that we use.
Matt, just for clarification, sometimes don't they use proactive citations written in a particular area? Sometimes citation volume can go up outside of crashes, so times, sometimes it does lend itself to closer scrutiny, but I'm saying that's what TechDOT uses, but some cities do use that, I think.
Yeah, yeah, so, so conducting traffic studies and, and traffic data patterns as well as crashes and citation-driven data as well. You know, if, if the citations are, are high for that kind of, kind of that area or a particular address for like a stop sign, then yeah, that would factor into that as well. But again, you would consider that an all-encompassing study, so to say. So the, number three, the location was the Morgan's Point Marina. Based off that, I did take a look at the Marina since our most recent storm has come When I went down there and looked, they do have do-not-enter on both the locations, the top and the bottom. However, they are a little faded, so we might want to suggest updating those signs with current non-faded signs. This, the suggestion was maybe adding arrows or do-not-enter or one-way, and I think it was adding it to the pavement. You can do that, that would certainly maybe increase the safety there, but we haven't had any, again, issues with wrong-way drivers or reported to us or any crashes or anything like that related to that. So again, you could do that to increase the safety, but it's, right now, with the signage, that's currently, currently where the signs are. They do have the signs where they're supposed to be.
One sign at each stop?
Yeah, so down at the Marina, yes, on the lower entrance to the entrance at the bottom, there is a do-not-enter sign there. And then at the top of the up section, there is a do-not-enter sign there as well.
Yeah, I didn't see the one, and maybe it is because it's faded.
Yeah, it's on the, at the bottom on the right-hand side, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't see that one. But I have, I haven't had an accident, but I have encountered, because it's blind corners on both of those, you know, it's like a 90-degree turn, so you can't see people coming or going. You know, so there have been some close calls, at least for me. I don't know if anybody else has had any close calls.
Uh, we haven't had any reported, so that's...
I don't know if it's just, you know, a close call.
Um, so the next intersection that we wanted to address was Morgan's Point Road and 2483. I know that this has been brought to council and by residents a few times, and I know that SitCog even did, I think it was Jim, did a, came to council and spoke about K-Tempo and the, I think that one was particularly about a roundabout. In this case, we were, we've talked with TechDOT multiple times about changing the signs to blinking, changing that intersection, and basically, at the moment, the only amount of crashes that we have worked since 2023, so within the past year, or during 2023, there were six crashes there. Three of those were non-injury, and three of those were minor injury or possible injury suspected. So, basically with TechDOT, again, this is a TechDOT-controlled intersection, so they're gonna relay all of their stuff off of generally crash data for them, and then a traffic study. And I guess again, SitCog has said that they, TechDOT has no plans to change that intersection. But our suggestion would be to follow up with K-Tempo.
So how many accidents would be enough there in one year to warrant consideration?
Uh, that's a TechDOT question, but I can tell you that they generally base a lot of things off of fatality crashes.
Well, I mean, you're not going that fast.
Right.
You know, I don't know, hopefully we will never have a fatality.
Yeah, I would agree.
Because people are going, you know, like 10 miles an hour, but there is another blind hill coming into the city where, you know, if you look left and then you look right and then you look left, then you can...
And, and I'll tell you again, your TechDOT is a long process, so your TechDOT, they will conduct a traffic study there that will take years for them to, well, it will take, you know, a while to conduct the study. It will also take them years to evaluate the study and then to implement if there's any changes needed made, and then it will take them years to actually implement the study. And not being rude about TechDOT or anything, that's just, it's the speed of government.
Well, should we get started? I mean, I think it has accelerated since the high school was there, so is it worth putting a question in to TechDOT? We've had six crashes. We do have the new high school, our traffic has accelerated, we've got some under, not underage, I'm sorry, but some inexperienced drivers, you know, coming from the high school, and I don't think, again, that there's going to be a death there. I would be surprised unless someone's just, doesn't understand it's an intersection. I think everybody knows it's an intersection. It's just, traffic is coming between 40 and 50 miles an hour.
Matt, do we know traffic numbers on a daily basis at that intersection?
No, we don't. We don't have, at the moment, we don't have any way to conduct that. We are looking in the future for this upcoming budget of having a traffic data collector to add to a mobile so that we can add it to particular streets that may be having traffic-related issues, so that is upcoming. But at the moment, we don't have any way unless you want to sit out there and...
Well, isn't there a flock? There's a flock camera, though, coming into the city, and I don't know that there are too many streets once you pass that block before you get to this intersection.
You have Lake Forest?
Yeah. Lake Forest, Rancho del Lago, Cidro.
County road coming into the city.
Briarwood, Apache, Tejas, Brandon, Brandingire.
That's the block?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
I think it'd be useful if we could somehow or another get Temple or somebody to run a little black line across the thing counter at the end of it, just to give us an idea. We always say, well, the traffic's increased, the traffic's increased, but by, we're at the data, no data.
Yeah, we could, we could pull flock data for, for vehicles traveling on that road, but again, that doesn't take into account the vehicle that comes into the city and then travels past that and turns off before they get to, so that data is unreliable, yeah.
And then just to highlight, I think K-Tempo does drive a lot of that as well, as far as what's gonna get done. I don't know how it's set up here, but we'll look into seeing if we can get a seat at the table. I know we're not one of the bigger...
Is it on it?
Are you on it?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the executive side of it. Do they have any, are on the, the governing side, do they have anybody from the executive? Like, a lot of times, city managers go as well, or they're...
Most, no.
Okay.
Usually...
And maybe we're not, maybe that's not something that, that's customary there. I just don't know, because I've never been on this side of it here.
Um, I think Dalton was a part of it, and then when your Ryan was our interim, you know, he's the president of it, and we can always take things through your Ryan if...
I, I think that's a good question to ask him if he has no objections for, if you, you know, I'm not trying to intrude on what you're doing, but I think there's a place for a governing side and executive, you know, to get things kind of balanced there, so if he's no objection to it, I'd like to have a seat at the table or to have a designated where we can at least start getting some information for that, that would kind of address those kind of issues. Not saying we'll make any progress. I've seen TechDOT, I've seen a lot of fatalities at certain intersections, and they, they did basically what Matt's saying, they took a long time to come around to something that was pretty obvious up front, and they're the ones that installed it.
I just don't want it to be on us.
No, I agree.
I want us to bring the issue forward, and then if they take six years or...
Well, it sounds like it's been brought forward, if that's what I'm hearing, but I think having a seat at the table, K-Tempo might be a force multiplier, so let's try that and see where it goes. I don't know. Okay.
And I think the person who brought that to their attention is sitting in the room tonight. I could be wrong, but just...
No, I'm sorry, no citizens' comments. We need to move along, please, Matt. I'm sorry, no comments right now.
......................................................
And so, so the next intersection that we wanted to talk about was Tanyard and Timberline. This one is a, is a single intersection, stop sign intersection off of Timberline. The, we don't recommend any changes here. We have, again, in the future, we are looking to get traffic data, but from the data that we show right now, there has only been one crash at this location since 2015. Speed bumps have already been in existence and have actually been moved, I think, one at least, maybe twice, to address the speeding and the traffic on this road.
Now, where I've heard it is the residents, and so I'm wondering at what point do we want to have a public hearing on the park, this park in particular, because those residents are upset over the speed that cars are coming down seasonally, you know, to get to Oakmont Park, and there are, we have put in speed bumps, but they enjoy the bumping evidently and continue their speed.
Our goal is to start with our first community forum that addresses these kind of issues in October, so I'm thinking that those kind of things, then we'll start marrying up with department heads and see if we can find it, if what's been doing, what's been happening hasn't been working, maybe there's another alternative.
And just, and just to be clear on that one, too, it's in the PowerPoint, you know, the amount of citations, and that's actually citations and warnings, not actually tickets themselves, we're all called citations to us. The amount of citations that have been written on Tanyard for speed have all been, less than 1% of all tickets across the entire city. So while, again, that's, that is an issue for residents, we also have speeding issues on, on other roads as well, from residents as well.
Tanyard is a very narrow road, too, so if you're coming, you almost have to pull off into the brush to get by, so that's the other unique part about Tanyard.
Um, and then the last intersection that we wanted to address was North Point and 317. This intersection is not in our city limits, so we won't have any control over that except for to have a seat at K-Tempo if they had ever read that and, by Jimbo doing that. And again, TechDOT has crash data, and that's what they work off of, and, and then in this case, there have been fatalities there, and it's not apparently meeting their threshold to do anything, but again, that's not under our control either.
Yeah, so I'm wondering if we do have a lot of residents coming out North Point to get onto 317, and it also is a vocal issue with our residents, I'm wondering if we can just get a letter to TechDOT on just expressing our concerns, it's outside of our jurisdiction, but just expressing our concerns about our residents ingressing and egressing from North Point onto 317.
Is it in our city limits?
No.
I mean, is it in anyone's city limits or...
Temple, City of Temple.
That might be a better approach, because they'll carry a weight, at least to talk to them. I'm gonna visit with them anyway, so I can bring that up.
Okay.
And I would, I would fully expect, I mean, it doesn't help us now, obviously, and it's not our, our playground, so we can't dictate anything, but is that area up there, once that development kicks in, whenever that is, they're gonna have to do something with that, they're not gonna be able to leave that intersection the way it is. Again, I know that doesn't fix the problem now, but it's...
So traffic...
I, I would guess that, just based off of the one that's going in down by Windmill Farms down there, I mean, they're gonna have to do something, so especially if that development explodes the way they're expecting it to, so...
Yeah, and I would agree with Jimbo, how one, once the development reaches there, they'll have to address it just for the amount of, the amount of traffic increase there, but...
Well, thanks for looking into all those.
Yep.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate your effort on that.
I just have a comment.
Yeah.
I was looking at the Morgan's Point Resort Marina, and it does go straight down. Somebody's coming up the wrong way, it could easy turn into a, a problem, so just to make sure that we get those signs. I don't know who does the signs.
You will, I wrote it down, we're, I wrote it down, we're gonna, we'll follow up.
I think that's important.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda is the roadway condition update.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, City Council, this is something that's been on the agenda, I guess, on the radar, if you will, for some time. This is not about funding tonight, it's just telling you where the, what the condition of the roadways are, this study, what it revealed. There'll be a plan come back next month for adopting the roadway plan, improvement plan, and then we'll talk more specifically about funding, but keep that in the back of your head. Tonight, I'll go ahead and, once we're set up, we'll go ahead and turn it over to ARA representatives, and they'll, they'll give us a brief of what it is, and they'll move fast, but at the same time, I think it will be very informative, and what we'll be focused on tonight is more about what can be done, and some of the things that already have been destroyed and it's gonna take a total reconstruct, we're not, that's not something we can fix overnight, but we can certainly keep some of it from failing moving forward while we still address some of those other challenges. Please, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. My name's Ruben Williams, I'm the project manager for this project, and I brought a young engineer, Rato Mandal, who's been doing a lot of the work, the QC, and actually did a lot of work preparing this presentation. So basically, we're gonna go over kind of the concept of pavement management, how we develop the scores, what it considers, and then a few high-level budgeting things that, just if we're using costs from other local agencies, what we've seen.
If you don't want to turn your chairs around real quick so you can see the screen? Let's see y'all break.
And we are, we are gonna get a, a, monitor both sides of this, that will be turned for you all, and the, the community should be able to see that thing is gonna get addressed, but first things first, apologize.
All right. We'll go over some high-level, very preliminary, just what-ifs. Every agency is unique, so things will be tailored to your specific needs, once we have more time to visit with the folks here involved in the study of the city. So pavement management system, the main concept of it is trying to do the right treatment on the right road at the right time, to maximize your funds, to get the most out of your network performance, to not spend, you know, to overkill on one road and then underkill on another, where you, you waste money either way. You don't need a little city street to last 100 years, and you don't want your arterials failing after two. So doing the, the right type of work at the right time. To do this type of, have this type of system, this program running, need to know, one, your inventory, what you have, what condition it's in, how you project it's gonna go in the future, what's your, what's in your toolbox, how you're currently fixing roadways, and then some kind of system, whether that be a fancy pavement management software that costs hundreds of thousands of dollars, or as simple as a spreadsheet where you keep up with it and track it. So there are options for agencies of all sizes, from very large to very, very small on that. Like I said, it's about doing the right treatment at the right time, operating within your, your budgets, and then looking at what could we be doing better, what hasn't worked, what hasn't worked traditionally, and, you know, there's no crystal ball, I wish I had one for some of these roadways. Sometimes you design a treatment on it, and it doesn't work out like you intended. Sometimes you do something you didn't think was gonna work so good, and it's amazing. So those are the kind of things, the what-ifs. We try to weed out, weed as much of that out as possible when you do these, and then try to incorporate our recommendations with current policies the agency has, so that you don't change too quickly where you can't keep up with it and it creates issues going forward. So looking at the, the general workflow of this project, you know, we want to have a plan, starting off. If you don't have a plan, you don't know where you're going. It's no different when you do a road survey. But one, step one was confirming the inventory, collecting the data for the condition, using all our fancy computers and stuff to get the scores on the roads, then doing some kind of analytics to determine what treatments, the timing of them, and then putting it all together in a report that can be used for future, future planning. So the main thing that was used to score the roads was the pavement condition index. This is ASTM standard, ASTM D6433, and those colored bars you see there, those can be adjusted, moved around. We use one to represent this that we typically see. I think we met with the city manager and the street department folks, kind of said, hey, we're gonna present it this way, this is standard practice for many agencies, and then this can be adjusted based on some of the findings, and I'll get into more detail on that shortly. Oh, this is the one that has the images, I'm sorry, I always forget this one has animations. Okay. What we're looking at here is, you know, if you defer maintenance, you may get a better benefit by waiting a couple years, or is it now the best timing? Some of the fancier analytics softwares do this type of analysis, others simply look at the score. For smaller agencies, it's almost easier to look at a spreadsheet sometimes for more practical groupings. Those agencies with 45, 50,000 road segments, you have to have a supercomputer to do some of those things. With this one, it is manageable to do this type of evaluation, the timing based on the performance of the roadways. So this is kind of the main concepts, I'm sorry, within pavement management, you know, what's the benefit of that? This gets into some of the optimizations you'll see with the fancier softwares. So when you're looking at doing a worst first, what kind of happens is you wait till the road completely fails, then you rebuild the whole thing. So in the example you see here, in theory, you know, in the, the slide, 375,000 per mile, I'm not sure what year this slide was made, but it's, order of magnitude should be comparable, whereas if you did little repairs, little by little, and you kept the condition up over the years, maybe, you know, doing minor repairs, minor pothole patching, crack sealing, and then doing surface seals, doing a few cycles of these, then maybe your minor rehabilitation at the end, your overall cost at the end is, comes out less on that. Actually, 360,000 instead of 375, and you've almost added an extra third to the life. So that's the concept of pavement management, doing little repairs until either you repeated them too many times and can't do them again, or, you know, something major happens, you know, say water gets in there, causes premature failure that no one could have foresaw. So like, as I said, we looked at the routing, the inventory, developed a collection plan, make sure you aren't taking care of, like, City of Temples or Belton's roadways by mistake, that's money that you're not responsible, roads you're not, so we made sure we had an accurate inventory. Go out there with our fancy van, I'll show you the, the pictures of that in a minute, get the scores, and then setting the targets and the budgets, this is where we're gonna be coordinating very closely with the folks here at the city. It's okay, you know, what kind of budget can you expect, the what-ifs? And if you're not sure, we can run different budget levels and say, okay, here's Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, because sometimes there's one agency we're dealing with, we've given them recommendations, they won't know what's approved till October. So we have to kind of wait till then before we can do their, their multi-year work plan because they may get funding for five years, or they may get funding for three at certain levels. So if they get the big funding, good for them. So it's just, it depends on your cycles and your budget, and that gets into your priorities, oh, excuse me, prioritization and your treatment selection. So just looking at the road network itself, primarily local roadways, and that's what we'd expect here, not a lot of major roads, very few miles on that, their percentages are right on target with most agencies, 88% local streets, 12% arterial and collector, that's pretty much what we see in... Oh? So your distrib, your distributions are what's fairly normal. I know up in the Dallas here, there was one agency had over 30% arterial and collector roadways. I think it was Richardson, they had so many big streets going between the highways, they had a lot of major thoroughfares to take care of. That's not typical. Where you are, it's spot-on on that, and has that, you'd expect out here in central Texas, a lot of asphalt roadways. You have a very, just a couple miles of gravel roads that we found, or that are partially asphalt and then turned to gravel on that. So those are within city limits on there, and you have the TechDOT road leading into the, the area. So what do we collect for the city? Well, one, we signed a pavement ID, so it can be tracked in the future. We confirmed the dimensions, so we did go through, have to measure some of the road widths. Many times when you download inventories, even from TechDOT sources, you just have a length, but knowing the width is important, that's gonna affect your areas, the volume of material, et cetera, that you'll need. Confirm pavement classifications, make sure you weren't saying something was gravel when it was really asphalt or the other way around. Got some confirmation on the functional classes, which an agency this small really doesn't matter too much as far as the, I'm sorry, the, the work plan many times, many of the ones, it may just be simply a label, but you do have some roads that you, I would consider are fairly major, populated from two streets on your inventory, and then confirm who owned the roadways. So we did do that, and then we do have GIS information on everything, GPS. Here's the van, I was hoping to have one with a cleaner picture of it, but we chose to use this one, because this is actually on City of Morgan's Point Resorts roadways, so I thought it'd be neat to include this one. So on the front of the van, on the picture on the left, that's a high-speed profiler, and what that does, that basically measures how bumpy the road is when you go driving down the road. You could have a road that has cracks, but it's not very bumpy. The camera system on the back, the one on the right, it's a 3D system, and I have another slide that shows the details of that, but that measures the rutting, the cracking, and there's other attributes it can measure as well, but that are not for distress surveys. Basically, where, where are the cracks, how much rutting do you have? And conversely, you could have a road that has not a lot of distress, but is very bumpy. So you, you know, you can look at both things when it comes to condition. Right now, we are focusing on the PCI. We do have the ride data as well in our final analysis, we'll incorporate that for considerations. As I was saying, the ASTM standards, basically what I told you. Some agencies do asset inventory with the, with certain vans. We do have another van that does photogrammetry and LiDAR for this survey, we were using the, the local one with the, this regular right-of-way imagery. So if you look at the image there on the, on the left... So if you look at the image there on the, on the left, that shows the cracking detected on the road. And this is done, because it's getting actually a 3D image. You get two images. You have one that's like a flat image, like normal camera, and the other one actually measures distances. So it knows where the cracks go down, the cracks go up, or the pavement comes back. So you know where it has, where it goes down, there's a crack or deformation, a deviation. So the system identifies those automatically, and then the raiders come in, manually review it, and then they'll classify the cracks correctly. So with the technology, it's gotten real good at seeing where the crack is. Based on the different types of cracking, you need someone to go in and do that confirmation. So we did the QC on the whole system, and you can kind of see, there's a invisible laser, you can't see, and there's another camera that takes the photos of, when you do the survey on that. Again, everyone's favorite pavement management graph. If you've ever been to a public works conference, you'll probably see this three or four times. But the idea is, if you look at the top, maintaining the roads is much, much cheaper. And there's usually a big jump when you go from that fair category to the poor, I'm sorry, the poor to the very poor, or I'm sorry, the poor to the failed or very poor category. That's where you're going from maybe an overlay to a reconstruction. Now with the shallow bedrock here, you may have, be able to drop that line down a little bit, and have a few more that you can still salvage before they need reconstruction. However, that's, you don't want to be in that failed area. That kind of gets very expensive to fix. So we'll look at the best strategies on that to make sure, hey, let's get out of here and see if we can drop that threshold where it's more manageable. Okay. Now for the conditions of the network here. You have, most of your, the highest percentage in any category is in that good condition. So that's 85 or above. However, you do have several that are in that, that poor category that are pre-failure. So there, you know, there should be some focus on there. Now, some of those, you may have two, three, four years to fix before they need a reconstruction. Other ones may need immediate attention on that. And then the fail threshold, and this, like I said, that, that 40 score is kind of one we've used on, on many recent projects. Given your soil conditions here, your shallow bedrock, I think that we can shift that down on that. So that's kind of 18%, and that's flirting with the threshold on that. Realistically, 15% is usually manageable or barely manageable. When you get to 20%, it, it becomes almost impossible to keep up. But given that you have the shallow bedrock, you may be able to go away with overlays to address those, as opposed to full recons where you're digging everything up. So I know that...
Somehow take into consideration traffic. So I'm assuming the 18% is based on mileage. So 18% of our 48 miles is failed. But does it, is there anything that can kind of tell you, well, and there are 100 houses back there? Or, you know, some, something as far as usage?
That, we do not have that information. But if there is traffic data or traffic counts on that, we can use it. The way it's incorporated here to an extent is based on your functional class, meaning your local versus a collector versus an arterial roadway. But, you know, specific traffic count information, while we, we don't have that information...
We would know if that 18% is a feeder or...
Correct.
Destination.
Yes, we, we do have that information on that.
Am I asking too early? Sorry. Oh, sorry. There it is. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to be flipping over on the slides.
I'm ahead of myself.
Now, another way to look at it is the area. And this is kind of where your cost comes in, because you're talking about an area when you repair a roadway, not, not just a length. You could have a very, very long narrow road or a very wide short road. So it could have the, the same areas on that. And then any roads that were not collected, that could either been, it was deemed as gravel, undrivable, blocked. Some kid had put his basketball court, court up in the middle of the street or something. But in general, we do collect everything. That 2% is a very, very small, small percentage. So looking at the length distribution, similarly on here, very, very similar statistics showing a lot of your roads are very comparable widths through the system. Now your network average is a 66, your overall score. This is an area weighted average. I have seen scores less than 50, okay?
What should that tell us?
So it's a zero to 100 scale, where 100 is like, just like in school, perfect, and zero is you never showed up to class at all.
Or like a D?
You're in there, and this, I wouldn't say, you could really say it's a D. This is probably, you know, when you're talking with roads, this is a manageable score as far as the network codes. I think, you know, trying to get this up above 70, 72 is realistic for the short-term goals. And we're going to look at this and actually set some more specific ones. When we kind of see what budget we're dealing with, that goal, that bar can be set. You don't want to set a goal too high and then lock yourselves into it and say, well, we committed to this, now we got to do it. That can cause issues as well. You want to set realistic goals when it comes to going to the future. I know some cities that have started like at 72 or, or, or high 60s, and in 10 years, they're up near 80. And then some of that through increased funding, some of that through just better management of their resources. So a lot of that will come out when we work with, through the detailed work plan. What's feasible, what's possible in that regard. So here is the map of the scores. So as you can see, you know, green are your roads, your good roads. And as it slides from, you know, green to yellow to red, the reds are your ones that are in your, your poorer condition on that. So we've thrown out a bunch of numbers showing, okay, red is bad, the scores, here are the scores. But let's kind of look and kind of relate what this actually looks like when you're driving down. Oops, that's, I'm getting ahead of myself now. What we're seeing actually in the network is a lot of the cracking as the primary cause of the score, contributing to the defects on the road. Like I said, very little rutting. Only 13% of the road segments are affected by rutting, and that's network-wide. On that, cracking, I saw, you know, here we had alligator. You see a lot of the edge cracking on the roadways. Alligator and edge do affect your score quite a bit. Very little patching on there, so you're not getting a lot of base failures, because you're not seeing, there's not, very little patching. And then you get other random distresses that don't contribute as much. And that's pretty much everything else combined. Point 1% is statistically negligible. All right. This is the slide I was thinking of. So we talk about all these scores. Well, 101 is easy, or a high one. 91's very close to perfect. But you see on this road, I really can't see where there's distresses. There may be a little crack here or there, but overall, you know, these are scoring very high. Very little work done. It looks like some of these may be a little newer, newer neighborhoods, or could have been resurfaced in the last, I don't know, several years or few years. And with, like I said, shallow bedrock, you're not going to get as much of the load-related cracking as quickly. And I don't think you have a lot of 18-wheelers going down your neighborhood streets. They wouldn't be able to get back out once they got to the, the dead ends.
The thing we really have is just trash collection.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's where you'll see a lot of that edge cracking develop on those. Okay, looking at these, so the score's a little lower now. You're in that, you know, high 70s to low 80s range. And you can start seeing more noticeable cracks on the road. You start seeing, right in front of that driveway, you can see the, the cracks forming. You're seeing higher severity, meaning the cracks are getting a little bit wider. And if you're actually starting to see that alligator pattern, that's already moderate severity. Low alligator looks more like a, just a kind of a longitudinal crack, a straight crack with a couple little fingers on it. But as you can see on here, still doesn't look too bad. You see some cracking, but not a lot. No major alligator, maybe a minor ones here or there, and block cracking either. Getting a little bit lower now on these. You can see the edge cracking is much more pronounced. It looks like water is infiltrating those cracks there, staying in there a little bit. Started getting sediment in there. When you start getting little rocks in there, when the pavement expands and contracts, those little rocks don't compress. So they'll pop out the pavement. The crack will get bigger, bigger rock falls in, and just from the daily temperature cycles, it fails. That's why, you know, crack sealing, while it sometimes doesn't look pretty, it's a good way to do something so you can come back next year when you have the budget for it. So there, there's ways to do that. Looking on the, one on the right, you're starting to see maybe a little bit of rutting starting to form on that one. You can see some wheel pads in there, but you are seeing higher severity cracking on that. And then, you know, with the county-type roads, those ones I call without, curbing gutter, you are going to get that edge cracking, especially with trash trucks and that kind of stuff on the roadways. So getting, going on, starting to get less than 50. Now this one here, you know, Oakmont, I'm seeing block cracking on there, certain types of distress. However, you know, overall, it doesn't look like it's very deformed. So that may lend itself to less expensive treatments. Now Cedro Circle, and this was one that was very interesting, because the rest of the neighborhood around it, it was like really good scores, you know, your greens and all that. And there was this one little, one little line that was a much darker color. I think it was red or orange when we were looking at it. And they say, well, look, that's the one where everything floods all the time, you know, where it comes across. So when we're leaving up the last meeting with, with the city here, we drove by that road. And sure enough, we saw all the cracks and it was flooded again. So that's going to contribute to the failure on there. So that one is, is a unique situation where just doing a repair, there's other infrastructure that may need to be addressed with that. So that's why we have not only the downward images for the pavement, but the right-of-way. So if we see something really weird that doesn't fit what we'd expect, we can look, okay, is there a culvert here? Is it next to a river, or is there something else going on which may change the strategy or lend itself to a, not just a pavement improvement, but other infrastructure as well?
Yeah, because there's a curb and then it looks like there's stormwater diversion.
And from when I, when I drove this, I think, if I recall correctly, there's a drainage field there where all the water flows into. So...
It might not be...
Well, you're, you're keeping the water out of one guy's yard, but the whole neighborhood actually, so their houses don't flood. But the water has to go somewhere. And then we're getting to some of these that are much lower. So here's a City of Morgan's Point Boulevard. You can see it has lots of the alligator cracking pretty much across the whole width. But the way, the way it looked, this looked more like just a very, very old road, where the pavement had completely oxidized, lost all its elasticity, and just cracked and cracked and cracked. You know, driving in here, I was telling him, there's lots of cracks here, but this road don't feel bad to drive on. So you had a, it had a good ride, but had lots of cracks. So you see some of those paradoxes when you look at the pavement data. And then Cheyenne Trail, you know, pretty much cracked all the way across with that alligator pattern. You know, those are the ones that would be candidates for ripping up all the bound material and resurfacing those roadways. Okay?
Now, I'm sure when you go through, like, Morgan's Point Boulevard is a, a very long road. It's one of our bigger roads. It's wide. Is it the whole road?
It's portions of it.
Okay, so we will get down to the nitty-gritty on certain roads, certain areas of certain roads.
Correct. And the way you'll, you'll do that is, well, look, okay, do we see similar condition in these adjacent blocks? Does that change over here? You know, how long does that extend for? Because you're on a group practical project, so you don't want to do one road here, one road here. Have, you know, basically an infeasible operational execution of the maintenance. So as far as, remember I was talking about that crystal ball, how the road's going to perform in the future? Well, we don't have, I don't have past data for your network. However, we have done City of Georgetown, I've been doing City of Georgetown's network since 2005. So we have year after year after year of performance data. And everyone knows 35, you've got bad soils on one side, good soils on the other. So we have this curve that we've developed through years and years of data that we can use as a starting point for the network here as kind of that crystal ball for, to predict what the roads will be in X number of years. So for example, road does start at 100, brand-new road, and deteriorates year after year after year. And just a few things on the strategies. This is a traditional survey, a traditional work plan development. We're really looking more at just the condition scores. Some agencies will actually go out and take structural data on roadways, basically how strong is the pavement? Because you have the cracks on top tell you one piece of information, but you don't know anything about the subsurface on that. So there are more extensive, or like text op, many times they'll combine the cracking data with the, the strength data. You know, you're building a 20-mile highway, you really want to be sure on the expenditures on that. Very customized, lots of soil changes. That's what some of that structural information gets. For the purposes of this one and most agencies, just the surface condition is sufficient to get the program going. As they mature, some agencies start putting that in. Okay. So now these costs are not necessarily what may be here. These are just some recent projects that we have for unit costs on treatments. Now, that 300 reconstruction on Bear County, that's very high, but there, there may be considering other things. A lot of the other ones seem to be within, you know, fairly a range that was, I would say, reasonable as far as the min and max, considering the, the treatment types on that. So this is kind of, kind of what to expect. We'll start our basis, or a starting point for the, what budget's required to repair the roadways. And we just looked at some average values here, and that 112 excludes the 300 from Bear County, because that was way, way, way outside the standard deviation. But just looking at that, and just it's very high-level preliminary thing, just give an idea of, you know, what treatments cost, what's the expected benefit of that, or timeline. We use these for this preliminary, high-level budget one. We'll go, we'll be going over the details in the next month, working with the, the folks here at the city. And...
Ruben?
Yes.
Would you distinguish between, some of these have the volume, I think, and of course, Morgan's Point's kind of small, so we may not get the same kind of pricing.
Correct.
Want to talk about that for a minute?
Yes, that, that's the big blue bubble that I completely ignored. That was right in front of me. So what we looked at was basically, we looked at average costs, and with smaller agencies, you're, you're not going to get them to come in, they're going to charge you more for the mobilization, the setup, and those kind of things on it. So for right now, what we did is we use an average cost multiplied by 1.5 on that. Now, if you're able to, you know, see when Belton is doing their projects, it's a, you know, with an inter-local agreement or something, we get, you get the same costs, the mobilization's minimized. But that'll require some coordination with the folks nearby on that, for that. I know that Cutler comes down every year and does the resurfacing in Georgetown, and they've been using the Cutler stuff for, since I've been working with the city on that. They've had good experience with it, they continue to use it. So those are ones that we know are visiting and coming back over and over and over. So there are construction companies out there that are in the area as well. Yes, so we, we kind of get, put a factor of safety in there. You know, you're not going to get that economy of scale where, say, San Antonio, they're, they're overlaying 150 miles a year. Yeah, they're going to get a little bit of a, a discount on that. Now, just looking at, you know, dollar values based on those preliminary numbers. Like I said, the recons may be overestimated, because I think we can drop that threshold and maybe bump up the overlays. And it's not a one-to-one, you know, for every road mile that you're able to pull out a reconstruction, you're getting about maybe four miles that you can do overlays on. So you get that benefit when you can really nail down what the appropriate treatment is. And we'll look at the different types of cracking in addition to the, the score. Remember that score, that PCI, is a combination of a lot of other distresses, partly rutting, partly cracking. So which one is dominant will kind of dictate the best treatment on that. And overall, the overall needs are 19.1 million. This is with the preliminary, preliminary costs, the assumed costs that we put together. So when, when you look at analysis and budgeting, we have basically four types of basic analysis we do. The first one, the unlimited of funding, that's the Santa Claus solution. That's that 19.1 million dollar, where he comes in, he fixes everything overnight, but he sends you a bill the next day. That's that 19.1, but that is fixing everything at once, which, you know, realistically, that is not feasible. But that gives you an idea of what could we do overnight. The next one is setting a target. And this is where, okay, we're at a 66 now. How much does it cost to get us to a 70 in five years, or 70 in 10 years? So we're setting a goal, and we're trying to see what's the funding to get to that goal. Then limited budget, this is where I have this much money, okay? So I have $500,000 a year. Or I have $200,000 a year. What can I do to get the best benefit for my network? And that can be combined with some targets as well, but it's like, where does, what I have in my pocket, how far can this get me? And then the do nothing, this is the one that I say, let's do this, this is our city council. But, you know, that's not what we're trying to do. This is the one, if we didn't do anything, what happens in 10 years? So if we don't do anything, it's going to grow from a 66 to a 56 or 50. And that's not where you want to be, because you're going to get to the... not where you want to be because you're going to get to the point where, all right, we have to rebuild the whole town at this point, and you want to avoid that. So that's kind of, you're in that range, that 66 range where, yeah, it's, it's about time to, you know, focus on this and get, get those network scores to where they're manageable. Remember, it's not about eliminating everything instantly, it's about making it manageable so that, one, taxes don't, you know, won't be super high, and you're still, the public is seeing the benefit of applying those treatments. So what's next? It'll be, uh, getting some confirmation on the unit costs, uh, working with the folks here of what are realistic funding levels, and then the what-ifs, the theoreticals, the target analyses, et cetera. And then, you know, grouping the, uh, projects for practical projects, like you were asking, you know, the roads vary in condition on the long roads. Okay, here's phase A, phase B, phase C, or maybe it only needs a phase A and phase B because phase C was just performing better overall. And I think that's all I had as far as the, the presentation went. If there are any questions, I'll, additional questions, I'll be happy to ask.
So, um, I have a couple of questions. Uh, one is, um, sometimes the side of the road just falls off. Is it ever beneficial or cost effective to put in like a cement ribbon on the side of the road? Or is that typically not cost effective?
Well, when, when you do stuff adding, say, uh, the curb, as you're saying, you may also be changing, changing the drainage characteristics. So that's another level of evaluation that may need to occur if that happens.
I was thinking like just one of those ribbons, you know, just flat cement along the edge.
Almost like a gutter.
Oh, okay, just.
Just a rip, they call them ribbons, I believe, and they're just to hold it in place, hold this concrete, I mean, the asphalt in place.
Those, those could be incorporated, but it'd probably be involved with the full resurfacing. If you just did a cut and replaced that little bit, you're, you're creating a seam on that. And clearly the road already had to be repaired on that. So it would, it would be an additional cost to say relay, it'd be like a recycle over, in-place recycling, say, or a recon, but you're adding that. So you could start adding, I think, the last time I priced that, it was like, what, $150 a foot, I think, or, uh, a hundred of, this was 10 years, 12 years ago, so.
Okay.
But the last time I incorporated, you know, then you're talking both sides.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so then you're, you're getting up to 300, 400 maybe, uh, per foot in addition to the asphalt and the base and all those repairs that are done, uh, within the driving lanes.
And then I know you kind of figured all our roads were arterial roads, but, but really this road here, Morgan's Point Boulevard and Cheyenne, our, Cheyenne leads to Marina, this leads to the community center, and I would say if we had, um, the, the main roads, those would be our, I think would be our two main roads. I don't have a, a traffic study on it, but just from casual observation.
Okay.
So what, and those, uh, West Loop is also, you know, another great big used road, but I knew, and those, all three of those were in poor condition. So if we had to start there, we weren't able to do anything else.
Right, and I, I've seen that where there was one tiny, tiny town, I did one for a long time ago, basically they had one road that needed to be reconstructed, and the cost of that was their whole budget. And that's why pavement management is not necessarily about doing the worst road. You gotta fix the good guys up here so they don't get bad. And then many times when they talk about fixing maybe a full recon that's expensive, that requires alternate funding, um, whether it's a bond or, or whatnot, you have to have another source sometimes for those major, major projects. Just keeping up with the maintenance is, is tough enough. Uh, with, I've never seen a city with enough money. So that is, uh, one thing that, um, you, that's 100% on that one.
Appreciate it very much, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? That's not the end of it, we'll be, we'll be crossing this bridge bunch times, okay?
Thank you.
Next on agenda is the budget update.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, the next one, like you said, is the fiscal year 24, 25 budget discussion. We've got some things, uh, to pass out to you tonight, but I want to go over, kind of start with the big thing that we need to consider moving forward. Uh, one is the current system that you have on water, and we're going to talk about this a bit more detail, because I know we've only got about 35 minutes left. So the water district is what you have, Temple is the one that provides that water. The Temple, City of Temple has water production, they actually get their water from surplus water and, um, then they sell it to us. We have a current 30-year contract that we entered into on August 13th, um, 2013. We purchase about a million gallons a year minimum required and can purchase up to 1,935 acre feet that's treated water, and that's considered a maximum amount of water. Under this contract, it clearly says that the contract specifically states that Temple makes no commitment to sell treated water to NPR after the term of agreement. Moreover, the contract specifically states that NPR is encouraged to purchase raw water if and when it becomes available and develop its own facilities for producing potable water. Problem is all that surface water, Lake Belton's already been counted for, um, and so has Still House and what have you. Now, there are some discussions underway for certain cities that are going to pipe, potentially pipe in certain, uh, amounts of water, but that's very expensive because there's no existing lines to do that. That said, if Temple determines, uh, not to review this agreement that we currently have at any time during, within the last three years of the agreement, Temple agrees to automatically extend this agreement for additional five years to allow NPR to develop an alternative water supply and treatment system. Based on the 2021 water, by, thank you very much. Based on the 2021 water plan, Temple will have a, will have to take some conservation measures, they'll have to firm up some water supplies, hence bringing it in from another source, um, or use water treatment plant expansion to mitigate so that water treatment plant can produce potable water and given more capacity. Uh, some cities have done that, Clean did probably about four or five years ago, it came online, very expensive process. Nevertheless, uh, by 2070, there's going to be a deficit of 17,000 cubic, uh, excuse me, acre feet of water, uh, for Temple. So as you can see, moving forward, their growth is we're going to acquire more water, and they're actively engaged in trying to look for some more capacity, and you're under a contract. I'm not saying they'll pull the rug out from under you. At the same time, when this thing's up for renewal, there's no guarantee you're going to keep the same capacity you have today. So I think it's prudent to start looking forward to some other alternatives that pulls you away from that uncertainty. And one of the options that you do have is a water well, uh, approach using the Trinity River that sits underneath us. If that's the case, uh, and this council wants us to explore that, we're going to be talking about that in just a little bit, about some of the things we can do and the costs associated with it. But to put it in perspective, there's got to be a well study done first, then you have to do the engineering permitting, then construction. Temple did one, I think they, they put one in for, not for drinking water, it was more for manufacturing, and that was recently done, and I think he told me it was around $3 million, plus or minus half a million. So we're looking at, no, for the, for the water well. That's for the whole thing. But that doesn't mean that's what ours, because remember, they're not drinking the water. Plus, they only have 200 and some odd acre feet that's been granted to them from that well. Now, we're in a different situation, they already have capacity, they have 30,000 acre feet plus already purchased. So we have nothing. So there's probably a likelihood that our acre feet allocation would be much, much higher in order for us to operate as a city. So if we went the water well route, you're looking at probably, and I'm estimating, we don't know it, and we won't know it for some time, it starts with a well study, but you're probably looking at $3 to $4 million to, um, put a well in. Now, you just have a storage tank just put in, elevated storage tank there at the Public Safety Center, so that's, if a well was located in proximity to that, you're, you're not in a bad spot. I think it's a pretty good idea. As your capacity raises, you might be able to lower the contract by certain amount. But their contract, Temple's contract reads that if you lower the minimum number, 100 millions that you're currently having to purchase every year, if you lower that, it also lowers the allowable maximum that you're going to be able to get. So one affects the other, this is what, what contract reads. So just keep in mind though, when that happens, also you're not buying, you're not paying, what is it, about 850,000? Where's, carry on, he just walked out. I think it's 100, I think it's, uh, $850,000 a year right now we're paying Temple for the water. So as that cost comes down, that can be reallocated for, for either, um, the next well, because you may need more than one, we don't know. The study will start giving us that, that information. So that's something you need to keep on the radar. If you all want us to do this, I'm gonna let Jesse talk real quick, but I want to let you know that it does require us to be, going from distribution to production, there are certain requirements the state requires us to have, uh, in place in order to operate that. One of them is, I think it's a Class A license. Where are you at, Jesse? Come over here real quick if you would. Just tell us real quick what that, uh, that option, if we went to the water well approach to solve this issue, what does that mean from an operational standpoint?
The commission categorizes us as a distribution system. We're buying our water, we don't have any treatment. Well, if we take on a well, we now become a groundwater system, we'll still be purchasing from Temple, so we'll be groundwater under the influence. It's going to change our department completely, you know, we're now producing water. It's going to take a whole different category of licensing than we currently have. We'll have to have two, minimum of two licenses, come on board from scratch to even turn it up. After one year of experience, the rest of us are eligible to test and convert our licensing. So, running out of port, an opportunity came to us, and this time is a good thing, a thing at the right time, we really need to look.
Okay, and one thing he did, uh, here lately, believe it or not, we have a vacancy for a water operator, I believe, and lo and behold, someone, uh, we found out was interested in coming this way and working for the City of Morgan's Point. He actually holds a Class A, uh, Class A license, I believe. So we have an opportunity, if you're going down this road, if you're not, there's no sense of us wasting your time or anybody else's time, or this gentleman to come up from another employer to us. But we think if we use the salary and benefit savings we have currently in that, from that vacant position, and if I were to reclassify that position to a project lead that would be responsible for overseeing this process, and again, the study would start no later than the first of October, we've got, we might have the funding now, if not for sure, we'll have it programmed in for October 1. And I think it's under 30,000 for that first stage.
Correct.
And then, so that, and so what we would do is, we would use existing salary and benefits for that position, we would go ahead and program it in for the 2024, 25 budget year, and we would, um, bring him on sooner than later, and he would be the project lead for that. I would reclassify the current operator position so Jesse understands he would not have any more additional authorized positions, just one that's reclassified to the, to this other position and utilize that funding that was programmed, going to be for next year, that's now the project lead. So there wouldn't be additional staffing, but we would end up increasing probably, I'm guessing, 20,000? Ballpark, okay? But well worth it if you're going down this road. If we're not going down this road, then there's no sense in doing all that.
We kind of don't have a choice. It was going to be iffy and a lot of money and a lot of years down the road if we could get water off the lake.
Yeah.
And setting up a surface water treatment plant is astronomical price, price starting up is going to be out of sight for our city.
I did, you know.
Renegotiating more water from the City of Temple is not going to happen.
Well, we tried that recently, yeah.
Groundwater is the cheapest source, and there are systems around the county here who just pull it straight out of the ground, add some chlorine disinfection and sell it. That's what I anticipate we're going to find.
I do think it's the smartest way forward for, and it would be prudent, because right now, they're telling you upfront, there's no guarantee, and the more demand they have, you're always going to take care of your own home front first, there's nothing wrong with that. But the reality of it is, you're all dependent on others, and you really don't need to be in this day and age. And the tourniquet sits underneath you, it's a good opportunity to go ahead and maximize use of that. And, yeah, it may cost you, uh, maybe three or four million dollars, but think about it, you're spending almost that, a million dollars a year paying someone else for the water. So that's something to consider.
What are the funding options for that?
There are, of course, there's always that option of debt. I'm not a fan of debt. Uh, you've got water rates, you've got, and that's something that the debt, if you issued revenue bonds, they would use that rate. They would say, this is what we're willing to do as far as giving you the money under these conditions. And they can, you can say, well, we pledged to raise the rate by this much to continue to have that solvency, if you will, to pay for that debt. But you're paying for the debt, not only to issue, but you're paying investors and what have you. Another option is, is manage it ourselves and have, uh, have their rates as needed be increased as they, as they go. Now, the proposed rates tonight are not a big jump, and you'll see that, but it's a start in the, in the right direction, and we'll get into that in just a minute. But my point is, is that, that's, so you can issue debt, you, I'm talking revenue bonds, it's generally, but you could also issue just certificate obligations as well. You're going to pay a higher rate because we have some challenges with our accountability as far as audits go. The 22 is just now underway, so it's going to be a while, uh, before that's wrapped up. I do expect in the next six months or so, that we'll be caught up and we'll probably finish 2024 fiscal year, probably pretty close to on time. But that doesn't mean it is going to happen, that's what I believe to be, going to be the case. So given that fact is, I think it makes more sense to, if you are wanting to not, if you don't want, if you don't want to stay on this path, it's time to start moving now because it's not a quick fix, it takes time to do all this. So you got revenue, you got, uh, revenue bonds, you've got rates, you've got, uh, existing budget, you've got, uh, grants that may or may not be available, um, so there's, that's kind of, or a combination thereof. But the reality of it is, the study doesn't cost a whole lot, 25, $30,000 to get moving. We've got a chance to get a Class A licensed person on board to be the project lead. I think that's a good movement in the right direction, and then the permitting and engineering will come whenever that opportunity comes up and we'll know what we need to do. But the rates will have to be adjusted because there's not enough capacity coming in, not enough revenue coming in to do it without it, quite frankly, uh, but.
That Texas Water Board, is it TW?
Texas Water Development Board.
Development Board.
Yeah.
Right, um, they're, according to the articles I read, you know, they are flush with money to help small towns with their water restrictions or their water requirements.
And if they don't give grants, they can, a lot of times they do small loans, and that's something we might look at as well. So like I said, you could borrow the money, it's an option. Those are things that, alternatives, and what we will do is, you have, you'll see the CIP project list tonight, and you'll see there's quite a few on there, and there's a lot of them that, uh, price has not been determined. So that is, that all has to kind of work kind of in unison with one another, it's like a symphony, I would kind of use that. You can, you can have a lousy music coming out, or you can do it right, and, and that's what we're trying to do, is you do it right in, in relation to everything else we've got on our plate. But anyway, so that, thank you, Jesse, I appreciate that. So in a nutshell, that's what we're looking at doing. So I definitely would like some type of, I, I, an idea if you're all interested in going to the water well study. If that's the case, then I'll go ahead and reclassify this position, hire them, and start working on that goal. But I want to make sure that, uh, if there's any concerns, we hear them tonight.
Are we committing to starting the process?
I would commit to starting the water well study, permitting and engineering and construction of it if it's feasible, but we need to bring someone on to be the project lead, and he'll also help the water department in other capacity. But that's, that's what, when this project starts, he'll own that as a project lead and give us updates accordingly, but.
We don't know where the end is because we don't know what the study's going to say.
Yeah, I do know the end of the contract, you don't, it's, it's unknown. So let's, let's say that with that reality, I think it's a smart move to go towards wells because I think it's based off of Jesse's research, he says other cities are doing it, and, uh, what city nearby has one? Moffett has one right now, and, uh, they treat their own water and they give it out, it doesn't take as much as it does from the surface water. So I would say, yes, I think it's a prudent move.
Basically, we're starting the process.
Yes, that's, yes, sir, yes.
We're not voting on that to.
We're not voting on that, I'm just.
No, no, no. Yeah, okay, just to let you know, we have to start somewhere.
And then we'll go incrementally from.
Yes, yes, sir, that's my plan. But I just want to see if there's any concern before I go reclassify the position, have this gentleman come on board to run something like that, and then find out it's not going to get funded in the, in the new budget. I want to make sure that they, you all understand, this is a commitment to move forward if it all feasible and appears like it will be. Okay.
Of course, we'll have to approve step by step too, at each, at each one.
You will, all this stuff has to.
All this has to be approved by council.
This is nothing more than a discussion to make sure that you all understand the This is nothing more than a discussion to make sure that you all understand the direction I'm going, both here and now, and for the 2024, 2025 budget.
Since we're going to continue to address this, we need to move to the next, next deal that's.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Almost at our time limit.
All right.
We want another some brush discussion.
I thought there was money in the budget, 23, 24, for a water study. Okay, so if.
We have, we have.
Okay. Okay, that was my question, we don't have to wait until.
It's not your market study, but you have money available.
I see, okay, thank you.
Jesse, real quick, he's handing it out, what do we typically, and I'm not putting you on the spot, just ballpark, I don't need down to the exact gallon, what do we, the, the amount that we purchased from Temple, you said it was a million, is what?
850,000, well, it's 100 million minimum, up to 1,900 acre feet of water.
Do we always use the full amount we purchase? Do we go over that? I don't.
Yeah. The calendar year 2023, we purchased 205 million. So, and maintain our contract in the future, the good average that we were given for a well is 1,000 gallons a minute or 1.4 million a day. The current contract is 1,200 a minute, about 1.7 million a day.
So there's a large gap in there that we could narrow pretty rapidly if we establish this?
The violation we're currently under is production capacity, it's based on that 1,200 a gallons a minute in our contract. We're actually well below it, but at 0.6 gallons per connection per minute, we're over. So that's our violation.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
If we moratorium construction today, we still have to get more water somewhere.
Okay, so speaking of water, what you've got before you is the draft of a tiered water proposal rate. This rate does away with the base 100, or excuse me, 1,000 free gallons with a base rate of $45. Several different thoughts in this process, but the bottom line is, you have a flat rate thereafter, 510, it does not generate enough revenue to these, do these kind of things. If we do a tiered water rate proposal that we're saying here for the next fiscal year, you've got three options before you. Option A, B, and C, if you look at the 510, 530 on the price, they're same on each one, what we did is use the gallons as 40,000 or above. What you were doing here is, you'll see the very top one, option A, hitting 30,000 plus because we didn't look at 40, it's anything above 30,000, but the next two you see, we use 40,000. The idea behind this is, is that right now, this proposal does away with the 1,000 free gallons, it keeps the base rate at $45 that was set in August 13th, 2019, and it's based off a fiscal year monthly average usage that Jesse provided, and so we took 205 million divided by 2,000 meters divided by 12, and you end up with 8,500. Underneath that, you see a water rate proposal for multi-residential complex, we don't currently have that, we have, I think it's one meter, Jesse? Right. And so this will basically be all those within a multi-family residential complex that consists of three or more units, living units, they'll each be required to pay $35 base rate. They'll have some usage, but we don't have a good number to tell you what that average usage is for apartment complexes. So the $35 is the base rate, base fee, if I should say. And what I got here at the very bottom of this proposal is you'll see option A, the cost under this option A for 8,500 gallons comes out at $89.95, 2,000 meters roughly, and the base fee of $35 from the multifamily proposal, and there's roughly 100 units, I think it's like 99, but we're not 100% sure that, so we'll say 100. Total revenue generated based on option A would be 2.2 million, as opposed to currently, we're getting about 1.998 million. So that 2.2 million would generate about 202,800 in revenue. It's not a lot, but keep in mind, you've never had a tiered rate, so this will just start the process, and I think it needs to be looked at annually to see where, where it needs to be adjusted sometimes.
On the multifamily one?
No, 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 this is thinking of options, we're already done with the multi, I've talked about that, we're down at the options, A, B, and C, but it does include the multifamily base rate of $35. And annually, it comes out to 42,000 for all 100. So 89, if you look at option A, $89 would be cost for an 8,500 average usage on the meter, 2,000 meters, the $35 base P, base fee, and you've got 100 of those, comes out to 2.2 million plus, and the revenue generated would be 202,000, above what we're currently generating.
I'm a little slow, sorry. So A, B, and C are doing away with, the first 1,000 gallons are in your $45.
Yeah, this proposal does away.
So there's no, no gallons included in the $45, but the $45 isn't changing.
Right, right.
Okay, I got that piece.
All right.
And then how many tiers are we setting up here?
There's only three tiers for option A, B, and, well, the tiers, I'm sorry, the tiers are the pricing up there, and that's what Jesse recommended, so he's the subject matter expert, so we kept what he recommended, we just used the different gallons. You can go from 0 to 3 on the 510, drill down to B, and you see from 0 to 4,000 gallons, and option C is 0 to 5,000 gallons. His proposal, I think was.
It seems a little complicated because right now, we're going from no tiers. Basically, you get 1,000, and then it's, all of your, all of your water is at 510.
Right.
And now we're setting up all these in.
You are, and it was recommended, I guess, back in 2019, a lot of cities use tiered.
Set up about four tiers, yeah.
Yeah, well, and that's, every city's going to have their own likes or dislike on it, but the, the thing of it is, you have no tiered system, this would implement a tiered system.
Definitely wanted to.
It's keeping the lower numbers pretty, pretty reasonable, the question is, based on the gallons used, that's where option A, B, and C comes into play. Then you look at the tiered, the tiering up, and that's something that we would look at and recommend if you're, because that's generating not a whole lot of revenue, but it does increase about 200,000 for option A, a little over, just under that, 188 for option B, option C's.
40,000 gallons, if you run a normal sprinkler system, you're going to hit 40,000 gallons in the summertime, I'm pretty sure.
But remember, you'd only, all these other lower tiers would have to kick in before you hit that 40 and above, or that 30 and above in this one.
Right, 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 right.
And 40 and above in the other two.
Right, right. And then there's nothing punitive after, say, 80 to 100, and then you're getting into commercial, somebody's using it for commercial use. Is there any punitive at the high end? Okay, because I think there are a couple, we don't have anybody over 100, 80 to 100? Oh, I thought we did, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I thought we did.
Okay, folks, we're going to need to move here pretty quick because we're.
So you got the tiered program, I mean, a tiered thing, if you all look at, look at it, I can always come back and ask for feedback individually from you, so to see what your liking is.
Did you get a chance to look it over and discuss it? We're, we're across.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we need discussion time, so.
Well, y'all are going to have to decide which ones y'all want to do, if any of these.
If any of them, and you make them up with your own, and that's fine, I just want to make sure you, you understand, we're trying to get, if you're going, you're going to need more revenue, you don't have enough, and there's no sense, because this is what what revenue bonds will do, they're going to end up adjusting your rates if you had a tiered system. That's what they do with most cities, that's what they did in Clean when I was there.
You got time to do the brush?
Yeah, I'm gonna do it real quick, I'm almost done. The capital improvement is something else I want you to look at, the capital improvement projects, please see them in your feedback, if you have it, do it individually, and it talks about the water well study for fiscal year 25, sewer lift engineering station, sewer lift station engineering, and then the following year, we'll look at constructing. This building here has roof, wall, foundation leakage, and the locks are a problem on, my understanding, so that's in here, we don't know what the cost would be, but we need to take care of the building so it doesn't get worse. Utilities generator for Jesse's shop for not only the sewer, but also for the, for expansion possibility, public safety generator, we saw the need recently on that. Drainage improvements, it's a big issue, we're going to come back here in a few days and try to solidify a time in the near term to have that discussion specifically just on drainage. Roadway improvements, we talked about it, we got to find a way to funding source. NCA park A and E, there has not been any on that, the conceptual, conceptual part's done, so we'll look at what's the next phase. Facilities condition assessment, that's something that can be done, some in-house and very little money spent on it, but it needs to be done. Water line replacement study, we've got roads that were built, and there's no water lines on it, I don't understand it, but it doesn't matter, that's where we're at. So we need to figure out where they're at, what we need to do moving forward on that. Each year, you'll see what it's broken down like that, all the way through 2029, this will be what will be included in the budget unless there's any modifications, and we welcome your input, and just remember, just, just do it individually, if you would, to my, my office, and I'll, I'll note those and come back the next time we meet.
Yeah, by doing it individually, directly to you, we don't get the benefit of discussing it.
No, 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 I'm not saying you won't get, I didn't mean that.
Oh, okay, okay.
I didn't mean that, I'm just saying, send it to me so I can include it on there for a discussion later on, it's not, trying, yeah, I understand my place, I wouldn't do that to you.
I'm like, wait a minute, wait a minute.
All right. So those are two things to ask you to look at and see what you can do. On the storm update, I want to let you know that right now, as of today, we have collected 17,000 QB guards of that debris, 206,425 of the original 480,000 of the Sears contract has been spent, that means we have 273 dollars, 273,575 dollars remaining. We believe that we'll have enough money to complete pass one and transport and dispose of the debris. Tipping fees are coming in much higher, apparently this area here requires $10, by the time you figure the cost of transport and the tipping fee itself, it, it comes up to be a pretty pricey endeavor. That said, we think we can still make it within the 480. What we did do is we looked at the, the, the hanging limbs, that they haven't been collecting that many of them, so we're cutting back, we budgeted 100,000 for that, we're cutting that back and applying it for the tipping fees, and we think we've got enough to do that. I talked to BJ, he says that he doesn't see a lot of them either, but he thinks he can handle that, he's got a lift and what have you, so we'll do some of that in-house and save us a buck or two there. When the original estimated cost to do the brush pit was done, that was several weeks later, there was quite a bit of debris dropped off, and so now we're up to 53,760. We're going ahead and moving forward with that, however, we may not spend all the 480 if we don't, if we can, we'll, we'll save some money there. On the other hand, if we got enough capacity to do hotspots on the second run, as in like, these are some pretty good sized loads, we want to go ahead and do that and spend that 480. This 53 is built into the budget amendment that you'll see, and that's going to be an opportunity for us to get everything at the brush pit that we had from that episode, ground up and mulched and stacked up for us, and we're going to either, well, one, we're going to try to give it away to all residents for free, if there's no objections, and we'd also like to go ahead and give it to area communities because we're going to have a lot of it. Then, we're also going to look at spreading some of this stuff, make a thin layer and try to keep it on site, but try not to go to the disposal side because that's going to cost money. It's not covered under FEMA, because remember, this is something we did on our own, and FEMA is not going to cover it. However, once this first pass is finished, and we've got Sears out of here, that phase is finished, our goal is to go ahead and hire an additional person in the budget, and we're going to have that person, or one of those people, actually work with the brush truck that we've got now, we're going to use the equipment we have, not the fire brush truck, mind you, one that collects the debris. And we will try to also see if we can acquire one with a grapple, much bigger, but right now, we're going to use what we have, and we'll start doing this mitigation ourselves and count for it ourselves so we can get FEMA reimbursement. We should be able to get the hours collected as well, reimbursed up to 75%, and we should be able to get the, the debris, the hauling, there's some certain amount they'll give us for that as well. So we might make up, not guaranteeing, we might make some of that 25% that we thought we lost because of all this, we might be able to, of course, you're using the body to do this full time, but it has to be done anyway. So we might be able to get that mitigated and/or recover that cost another way. But it means we have to fund that position and, to make that happen. I've got seven minutes, Mayor.
Is that a new position, or is that one that's already in the budget?
It's one that's already authorized but not funded, so I want to fund it this next fiscal year for that purpose, because we're going to live with brush for a while. And so we figured that if we can do what we can in-house, that would be an option for us, and maybe recover some of that 25%. We do, we did attend the FEMA mandated meeting, if you're going to get reimbursed, other area cities, and the county was there, and we've got a deadline within 30 days to get certain paperwork in, I'll do that, we're going to use Anna, the manager or the coordinator for grants, we'll give her permission, and she'll take it from there and help with debris tech to make this submission go smooth. But after that, we're also going to utilize her, if we can, to go ahead and do our work and track our work to make sure we get that to FEMA as well. And again, we learned a lot from this process, working with debris tech, and they're giving us instructions on how to do it, because we're so small, that for accountability purposes to meet that FEMA requirement. So it's going to be good, I think, in the long run.